Good evening. Welcome to the Town Council meeting, regular meeting on Monday, June 27, 2022. I'm calling to order at 7:27 PM in the McKinnon Council chambers. I apologize for the late start. We ran over discussing some other business in the other room. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Mary.
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona.
Present.
Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
We have eight present. Item number three, consider and accept the Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, June 6, 2022. Sub move.
Second.
Discussion. Counselor Adams.
Only on 15B, it should state only a one-year appointment. That's all I've got.
Okay, anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstain? Seven oh one. Consider and accept the emergency Town Council meeting minutes of Monday, June 13, 2022.
Sub move.
Second.
Discussion. Any deletions, additions, corrections need to be made? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? In unanimous of all present. Subcommittee reports. Item number five, General Government. Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On last Wednesday, the General Government Subcommittee didn't meet. We have agenda items number 24 and 35 on the agenda tonight, and we have a couple of the smaller tasks that were still under agenda item number 31.
Thank you very much. Department of Public Works. Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through here, we had a DPW Subcommittee meeting on 6/21/22. The Veterans Room at 6:00 PM. In attendance were committee members, myself, Counselor Dow, Steves, Counselor Steves, Citizen Member Steve Lazo, and Kevin Splain. We had a citizens forum where we had discussion on the Main Street project, walk through and report on the progress of negotiations with the contract to repair potholes. On update, the acting DPW Director Matthew Discharden announced that the project engineer, VHB, responded to Lynch's proposal for repair. Counselor Jovan asked if the town was actively engaged to make sure the issue is resolved, and Mr. Discharden answered yes. We discussed the tie-in bond proposal to provide full-time construction observation on the West Green project. That would be on agenda item number 26 tonight. We reviewed the bid results for replacement of primary clarifier number two drive at the wastewater treatment plant, agenda item number 27 and 36. Discussed sewer transfer to cover the cost of actual and projected electricity bills to the end of fiscal year '22, agenda item number 37. We discussed the DPW transfer to cover streetlights and various town-owned property electrical bills to the end of FY '22, agenda item number 2038. We discussed the DPW transfer request of $1,159.85 from various accounts to repair the AC system that serves the office at the DPW facility. That is not on tonight's agenda. We discussed the DPW transfer request of $1,600 to purchase four-string trimmers and two cases of oil. That is not on tonight's agenda. We discussed amending the Charlton IMA payment to reflect an increase in water usage, agenda item number 39 and 40. We discussed appropriating funds from water retained earnings to water stabilization. That's agenda item number 41. And we discussed the water transfer from various accounts to cover actual and projected electrical bills to the end of FY '22, agenda item number 42. We also discussed water transfer request to Capital Reserve purchase watershed land. This agenda was passed over at the request of the acting DPW Director due to the recent water main break on High Street and the possibility that we may need funds for repairs. This was passed over by a vote of five to zero. We reviewed and discussed the citizens' request to install a no parking sign in the area of a residential driveway on Pleasant Street. This agenda was withdrawn at the police chief's request. Vote to withdraw, five to zero. And we reviewed and discussed rescinding a parking permit on Worcester Street as recommended by the Traffic Commission, and that's on agenda item number 30. The meeting was adjourned at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Education Human Services would be Counselor Jovan. He's unable to make it this evening. They have, I believe, two items on the agenda for this evening, and both, as I recall, were voted positively. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting last, on the 18th, I'm sorry, last month, had our meeting, agenda item number 2021 on tonight's agenda, also on the ARPA Ad Hoc Committee, agenda items number 43 and 46. I'll explain that when we get to them. Thank you.
Very good. And Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
We had a meeting on 6/21/22. We had an array of transfers, appointments, and various issues, and we will be discussing them and recommending on the future of this agenda. Thank you.
Very good. Item number six, Chairman's announcements. I have one announcement this evening. Vice Chair Adams, as you approach the podium. Tonight is the last night that our clerk will be here, Mary Dowling. She's been here for over four years and has done a yeoman's job keeping track of everything that we're doing, talking softly, talking loudly, talking quickly, talking very slowly, all hours of the night. She's done a great job, and to show her some appreciation, we have the gift and a bouquet of flowers for her. Thank you, Mary.
I just want to thank you all. This is really nice and super unexpected, so thank you. And I just want to say, you know, it's an odd job, but I've actually really enjoyed it. I was like new when I got this job, not from town, and I just bought my house, so it's been a really cool way to learn about the town and all it has to offer, and it's been really great, I think, working with this council in particular, and that's not a slight against previous councils, but I think it's been really enjoyable to watch the way you all really do kind of put the town first and put your disagreements aside and stuff. And Counselor Lazo always says it, you know, but you guys do a great job of that, so commending all of you. Some of you aren't going to be here anymore. Sad not to see Counselor Jovan here tonight, but best luck to those of you who still are and new counselors, and thanks a lot.
And that's all I have for announcements this evening. Item number seven, Chairman's announcements? I mean, Town Manager's announcements?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, you members of the council as well as the audience. Just a couple of updates. As many of you know, a little over a week ago, we had an issue with the church on Charlton Street. The council had their emergency meeting out there. Mr. Pelletier has been meeting regularly, or I should say, in regular contact with the owner. He did meet again with the owner today, the engineer, and a possible masonry contractor. The engineer concurs that the facade continues to be a potential point of failure, but he sees no evidence leading him to believe that the steeple is in jeopardy, and he has indicated to Mr. Pelletier he will put that in writing with his engineer's stamp. The contractor had looked at it, is looking to remove parts of the facade that may be falling back and marking them for reinstallation. That may be the fastest way to make the building safe and so that it can be restored. If the plan that the contractor has is acceptable, the owner or crane will be brought in and the work will be done upon acceptance. The owner will be reviewing the proposal from the contractor and engineer and getting a signed agreement back to Mr. Pelletier. If not, we will take action, as we've indicated previously. Mr. Pelletier has been working with the individual owners and his team to try and get it done so it doesn't become the responsibility of the town, but we are at a point, if they don't do what they say they're going to do, we're going to step in. Also, a week ago, last weekend, as you know, we had a water main break. DPW did respond that Saturday to take care of it. We did an emergency procurement over the weekend. Hydratech was a contractor that came in and put in some live insertion valves to deal with the well over 100-year-old water main and valve. The Water Department is working to uncover and exercise valves in and around Judith Ave and McManfield area. Going forward, in short term, they're going to look to cut out the leaking valves and cap them on High Street and cap the main around McManfield to prevent any water leaking back in and around the affected area. In the near future, they're going to be working with a specialized service to do a hydraulic model to identify any other issues and whether or not they can abandon the old vulnerable main which runs under McManfield without negatively impacting the pressure and the flows around the town. And once that model is done, they'll know what they can do more with regard to handling that leak. Also, in the last week or so, as you know, on the agenda, I've been working with the department heads to try and resolve some of the collective bargaining agreements. We've reached two tentative agreements, which you will be looking at later this evening. There was a seminar this last week to look at how to process the opioid settlement. As many of you know, the town signed on to the class action suit against many of the pharmaceutical companies that provided the drugs during the opioid epidemic. Massachusetts stands received $525 million, so there are presentations for how towns can start to apply for that funds and what those funds are used for, so we're starting to partake in that. This week coming, Wednesday night, here in McKinnon Council Chambers at 6:00 PM, we will have the Water and Sewer Rate Hearing. Those, the proposed fees are up on the website. It was published in the paper. We did open the hearing and we did continue it because there was not a courtesy copy outside in the clerk's office. That has since been rectified, and the rest of the information is up there, so it's open to the public and all that should be heard will be heard, and that will be here coming this week. And for the moment, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Very good. Item number eight, presentations. There are no presentations this evening. Item number nine, citizens forum. Are there any citizens that would like to come to the podium and address the council about an issue not on the agenda this evening?
Donald Solinsky, Henry Street. I just want to say before I start to read, I don't know who's up for reelection, but I hope, other than Counselor Ryan and, believe it or not, Counselor Marquetti, even though he voted to take my dog away from me twice, at least he shows me some respect. And so, other than you two, I hope you all get voted out. I was approached last week by a couple that had been watching these citizen forums. They said they were appalled when they heard a council member call me a psycho at the end of April 25 Town Council meeting. They don't want to come forward because they have two dogs, and they want to stay far away from all of you and the ACO, but they have been following this, and I hope this is an indication that many others have as well. I think it's important to reiterate, what I'm saying is not my opinion. What I say is fact backed up by video recordings of the meetings. You voted to kill my dog at September 27, 2021 meeting, and you deny it. I'm called disparaging names on tape, one instance, January 24, 2022, and April 25, 2022. It's all on tape, and yet you deny it. The town manager lied at the January 24, 2022 meeting, saying the ACO found placement for my dog Vegas, when in fact, the ACO said at the September 27, 2021 meeting, she could not find placement, and she recommended final services be performed. That line makes me laugh, as if she has empathy for my dog. Another organization found placement in spite of the ACO's resistance to that, and I had to sign a five-page contract saying I could never see my dog again and give up all rights to sue the town. Think about that for a minute. Never see my dog again. What harm could that cause anyone, for me to go visit the dog? The town did that, and I didn't even own the dog any longer. The town did. The egregious contract I signed because I had a bullet to my head and there was a need already for my dog. I ask the citizens of Southbridge, if the Town Council is so bold as to lie about these many facts that you can hear for yourselves on YouTube, what else are they being dishonest about? Because we have a citizens forum, I am able to bring this nightmare and this deceit to light to prevent this from happening to any other Southbridge resident. And I just want to say, in closing, that I'm ashamed myself for thinking that I could trust the politicians and the Police Department to do the right thing. My dog had a choking incident. He didn't attack anybody else a second time. I just took his muzzle off because he was choking, and I thought that they would come to reason and eventually just give me my dog back, but no, they couldn't do that. So I'm ashamed that I allowed that to happen, that I allowed them to take my dog from me because the next time, I won't. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to approach the podium to address an issue not on tonight's agenda?
Good evening. Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. "A community hath no fury than that of its taxpayers and residents being taken advantage of." The point to this taxpayer attending this public meeting. While my feelings range from disappointment to outright disgust, I'm not here about feelings, I'm here on facts. Facts that I think need public comment to bring to the attention of others. Last Thursday, I was told that our town manager was a finalist for a job in another community. Seriously, where would one hear such gossip? How could this be? Earlier this year, prior to March, negotiations with the Town Council began to extend his contract to 2025. The concept that longevity would provide stability was noble on the surface. For the town manager, it resulted in an immediate $11,900 raise. It also chained our community to this town manager until at least 2024, the soonest the council could send a required letter of non-renewal of employment if desired. In contrast, the town manager only has to give two months' notice if leaving and breaking the agreement. Should council take earlier action without just cause, there's a nine-month early termination clause. All of this is online, available for anyone to review. How could this town manager be seeking other employment after just negotiating in good faith, as negotiations are supposed to be done? Fact, Thursday night, June 23, online, one could watch the finalist interviews from the town of Carlisle. Getting to that point in the hiring process takes time, and generally several previous interviews beating out other candidates. Time and focus to put one's best face forward, time not focusing on Southbridge. Facts, this town manager's first official agreement was dated September 8, 2020. It was for three years, starting at $155,000, more than any other we've had, but for the record, not as much as some towns pay. A big step for our town, a big step too for this town manager wannabe, as he was only ever an assistant town manager. This along with benefits, insurance, sick leave, vacation, and unlimited comp time, as he deems appropriate, quite a package, short-lived. I really thought after the last debacle, I'd find more security for the town's interest in the contract, but sadly, there's less. But back to the facts. Anniversary dates of September 2021 saw an increase to $158,100, and to my knowledge, a $5,000 first-year bonus. Did the taxpayers know this? I'm not sure. September 2022 would have seen an increase of $161,262 to that point. However, we never made it to that date. Fact, the new employment agreement was posted on the agenda for March 14 council meeting. It was the last official item to be voted on after council returned from executive session. It was number 19, vote to accept the amendment to the town manager's employment agreement. Period. That was the agenda item, clearly in violation of open meeting law, because it said nothing other than that. The minutes regarding that vote accepted March 28 were as follows. A motion made by Counselor Jovan, seconded by Counselor Lazo to vote on this item. Several counselors commented on the wonderful job Town Manager McCall has done thus far, and they look forward to continued stability for the town and their processes. That was it. That was your comments to that one-line vote. Vote by roll call. All counselors were in favor. Adams, Daniel, Jovan, Lazo, Marquetti, Steves, and Ryan. Seven zero. The motion carried. There were no other details to us taxpayers, like who's going to fund the raise. Fact, effective March 14, 2022, according to the new town manager, excuse me, employment agreement, the town agrees to pay $170,000 yearly. March 15, 2023, it would go to $173,400. March 14, 2024, it would be $176,868. If this information was published, would you, would this public, have attended that meeting and questioned more? Fact, this town manager applied to the town of Carlisle on April 4, 2022. It's public record, less than one month after receiving his increased pay. While doing so may not be illegal, as the agreement, even after the extension, did not deny him the option to seek employment, unfortunately, it certainly shows little for his ethics. Fact, he did not get the job. Where does that leave us, paying a high salary to a man who does not want to be in Southbridge, who didn't have enough time before his raise to complete work? Money doesn't buy time, unless of course it closes the work commute distance. Fact, it was desired quite vocally by several counselors early in the hiring process, but not put in any part of the agreement that the town manager moved to town, or at least nearby. I believe there was an understanding this would happen after a child graduated, perhaps. I won't say fact. Didn't happen, and while excuses of not being able to find a suitable home were noted, it was clearly lip service considering the facts. He pursued and became a finalist in a town closer to his real home. Fact, we paid thousands of dollars for hotel nights so the town manager didn't have to drive back to Chelmsford. Part of the original agreement, you can look at Section 18E, the town manager shall be reimbursed by the town for his relocation expense in the first year of this contract, including up to 30 days at a hotel, up to $2,500. Are we still paying, and how much have we actually paid for his lodging expenses? Don't worry, I'm going to file an FOI on that later. That's the Freedom of Information Act, because I would like to know the totals. With the exception of the last town manager, we don't want to go there, we set a standard with dedicated onsite managers willing to stay hours needed to complete the work, not keeping tally sheets of some other time to be used at will, at least in my experience on Town Council for nine years and on every other committee for many years now. For the record, I had high hopes for this town manager. Mr. McCall has always treated me professionally in our dealings. As a resident, taxpayer, and businessperson in this community, I believe we deserve better. And now, through the chair, I would like to ask the town manager, have you applied for any administrative or management positions in any other towns while employed in Southbridge before or after March 14, 2022?
Before that question is answered, Ms. Clements, you've gone over your time. I need to ask the council to vote for another five.
I make a motion, extend your time.
Very good. All those in favor? Thank you. Please proceed.
Thank you. Is it a good time to think about that question?
All I'm going to say on this subject is, what I have to do when something presents itself to my family, I might have to do it. As for what's going on right now, I show up every day and have showed up every day in commitment myself to Southbridge. I still have. There may be situations where all of us put our own interests for our own family ahead of others. I've shown up every day for the last two years. I can't say that about everybody in this room, and I haven't done anything to disparage this community. I've been working my hardest for this community, and no, I put my name in there because it was close proximity in my town. It shouldn't have affected anything I did in this town, and it doesn't affect anything I'm doing going forward. I've settled contracts tonight. I'm bringing millions of dollars for this town tonight. You know, you can sit there and criticize me all you want, you're not sitting in my chair, but is my resume out for other jobs? No. This was an isolated incident. I spoke to the council members about it. Perhaps I should have said something to the chairman. I did not. But that's the end of the story, Ms. Clements, and if you want to come talk to me about it in private, I'm more than happy to share about it, but there's nothing really more that I'm going to talk about me and my family this evening.
Mr. Chair, since my term is extended, and I'll respond since I was asked a simple, I asked a simple question. It was a yes or no answer whether or not he had applied for any other jobs. I appreciate his comments, as most people do, but I disagree respectfully that this community has the right to know the decisions made and the money it costs us as to whether or not our town manager is staying or going after this committee, this council, extended in good faith a contract for longevity and stability, as the notes express. So, very disappointed. I know, I had no doubt you will act professionally, as we will still deal with each other, as you will deal with many others, but this also disturbs myself and others who have brought it to my attention that, once again, at any moment, regardless of the noble gesture that this council tried to make, this town manager will be seeking, potentially seeking, other places to work besides Southbridge. I just find that in bad faith and bad ethics when it comes to the position at hand. Thank you for my time this evening. I look forward to great things for Southbridge.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium this evening?
What do we get, three minutes or five minutes?
Five minutes.
Well, good news, I don't think I'll even use three. I didn't plan on coming up here. I wouldn't be dressed like us, about to mow my lawn, if I haven't been up here for years. But I'm going to make a comment. I might tick a few of you off, but it's meant from the heart. It's not a political comment. This is the only town manager since I returned 13 years ago that I haven't met yet, but he's also the only town manager that, until tonight, I haven't heard any snide remarks about him. He's treated other people respectfully. I've just seen him by sight. He treats me respectfully and everybody else. That's nice. It hasn't always been that way. I love this town, but I don't always like it. Something I don't like about the town is sort of a, what I call a factory mentality, but the little guy on the totem pole, you know, they're not supposed to speak up, do what you're told. You got a job, don't complain about the boss. That's not always beneficial. And I respect the man that might, on occasion, put his family above everything else, because that tells you something about that person's character. Not a lot of people do that. This man works hard for this town. Yeah, he gets paid a lot, but just because he wants to be closer to his family doesn't mean he doesn't like working here. It doesn't mean he's not loyal to our town. So I just wanted to keep that, you know, we have a pig pile attitude in this town sometimes too, not you people, but I see that. So let's cut the man some slack. You know, we've run some good town managers out of this town in the past. Let's treat them respectfully. I don't know, I already said more than I thought I was going to say, but, you know, Tom Brady, I bet you he still loves having been a patriot, just because he went somewhere else, maybe because his wife wanted him to go to Florida. I don't know, but I think we got an all-star, from what I've seen, and I hope you, you know, respect that and give the man a chance, because he's certainly given us his all. Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium this evening to speak on an item not on tonight's agenda? Very good. Seeing none. Item number 10. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Evan T. Genkos of Woodstock, Connecticut, as permanent full-time police sergeant for the town of Southbridge effective June 12th, 2022, for an indefinite period. State ethics in good standing.
Second.
Council Lazo.
The recommendation from subcommittee was unanimous in favor of this appointment.
Chief.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. Mr. Town Manager, thanks for having us tonight. Tonight, I'm just here to speak quickly about Detective Genkos, hopefully soon to be Sergeant Genkos. We had a civil service assessment center a few months ago. We had four candidates. Detective Genkos was the high scorer through that process. He was born and raised in Southbridge. His family owned a pizza shop in the, in the community, in the neighborhood that I lived in for about 30 years. And I only say that because, you know, this family, you know, they get Southbridge, they're part of it, they've been here longer than I have. He gets his work ethic from his parents. He's been a firefighter for what, about 11 years? He was an auxiliary for three years while he was also a full-time firefighter. He became a police officer where he was a patrolman for us for three years. He quickly moved up the rank to detective. He held that job investigating major crimes for just about nine years. So total service was 12 years with the police department, 11 years with our fire department, both in a full-time capacity. So he's got 23 years of total service to the community. He's an outstanding investigator, outstanding police officer, and I highly recommend him for the promotion to sergeant.
Very good. Any discussion? Counselor Adams.
I just want to say to the chief, thank you for bringing such an outstanding individual up here to be promoted. You know, I believe when I first moved to Southbridge, I met you. You were working in detail. And lo and behold, here 11 years later, see you move from one direction to another. It's pretty impressive, your resume. So that's pretty impressive to this town of Southbridge, and I just thank you for your service.
Very good. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Evan, I think you deserve it. You work hard for it and you started from low. I remember on the fire department, I was call man too, but you want to be a police officer and look what you are now. As a person, I was with you on the fire department, as a call firefighter, and I live in the town, I'm proud of you. You got my vote.
Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick note, it's always good to see a homegrown Southbridge boy climb to the top and rank as sergeant, in chief at this time. But you have to give Evan Genkos a tremendous amount of attaboys, going from the fire department to the police department, constantly in public service, understanding both sides of the line, now moving into the management role. I just congratulate you and proud to have you as a sergeant.
Very good. Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Congratulations. Item number 11.
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. Counselor Adams.
Thank you. Request us to move agenda item number 17 right onto 11. We have an EMT. Well, there's a, for an appointment for an EMT, and I'd like to, I know her family is probably here, and I'd like to be able to move her forward.
I'll second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Very good. Going to item number 17. Vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of Peola Nicole Gonzalez-Marcas as call firefighter for the town of Southbridge effective immediately through June 30, 2025, pending a core check, medical, physicals.
Second.
Chief? I'm sorry. Counsel Lazo.
The recommendation from subcommittee was unanimous for confirmation.
Very good. Chief.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for taking the time tonight to make this appointment possible. Obviously, Peola's family is here tonight, but as we continue to grow our call fire department service within the fire department, Peola came to me about three months ago and looking for a job opportunity. She's actually passed during her hiring process. She displayed a high degree of integrity, a great deal of responsibility and ambition towards the job of being an EMT and actually looking forward to being a firefighter. She is a resident of Southbridge and a graduate of Southbridge High School. She's also bilingual. She has an associate's degree in science from Dean College. Like I said, she's already got, received her EMT certification. She did that through the pandemic process, so there were many delays with that. A core background check has been completed with no issues found. This candidate is vetted through the subcommittee with a favorable recommendation, and I'm asking for a favorable vote of appointment this evening.
Very good. Discussion. Counselor Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I know Nicole for a little while. She used to work with one of, at my company. She's a hard worker. She's always dependable and I will recommend her. I voted for her yesterday. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
Just a quick note, I know we have a long agenda. I'd just like to congratulate her. I will be supporting this appointment. It's always nice to see somebody graduate from Southbridge High, living in Southbridge and working in Southbridge. It's putting Southbridge first. Thank you.
Very good. Counselor Adams.
Just a real quick apology. It was call firefighter, not EMT, so I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Okay, we return to regular order. Item number 11. Vote to ratify the employment agreement between the town of Southbridge and Karen Harnoy as finance director, effective July 1st, 2022 through June 30, 2027, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
Second.
Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. As you well know, Ms. Harnoy's has been a longstanding fixture here at Town Hall and a source of financial information. She was recently appointed by this body for a new five-year term, and we're looking to renew her contract, which is up. Her last contract was for five years, and you provided that in an executive session. I'm respectfully asking for your approval for the new five-year agreement from Ms. Harnoy's.
Discussion. Counsel Lazo.
I'd just like to comment on Karen Harnoy's. Karen's our finance director slash accountant, but she's more than that to the town account, to the town of Southbridge and definitely this council. We've had some major league financial discussions at this chamber, and Karen Harnoy's was more of a financial advisor, stepping up, explaining how we should pay things a certain way, how we transfer things a certain way, and how we move the money within the system. So with that in hand, that advisorship is very special, and she's been very loyal to the town of Southbridge over the years. I will be voting for Karen Harnoy's. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I have nothing against Karen Harnoy's. I've worked with her on the Capitol Committee. I thought she did a really great job helping me understand what Capitol budgeting is all about. The only, the only thing that I have to say is I also have to look out for the taxpayers of Southbridge, and this, this renewal involves a pay increase, which I can't support at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Karen is more than a fixture. She's part of the foundation of this building. Since I have been involved in town, she has always been helpful. She's always taken the time to go through and explain complicated numbers and formulas. I remember when I was on the school committee, going out and sitting there and going through the budget with her. So Karen has been somebody who's been invaluable to the town, and her work that she has been doing is always been to the town's benefit. I'm glad we could secure her, so I will support this tonight. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Manager.
I just forgot to mention one thing. I was advised by Ms. Harnoy's earlier that the, to align the contracts, we need to amend the end date to August 24th, 2027. It's just a friendly amendment, essentially. It's not.
Is that all, sir?
It's a tight ball.
Okay. August 27?
August 24th, 2027.
Very good. Any other discussion? Very good. Roll call.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Catrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
And Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations, Karen. Item number 12. Vote to confirm the town manager's recommendation to reappoint Andrew Pelletier as the Director of Inspection Services for a three-year term, effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2025. State ethics in good standing. I'll move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Counsel Lazo.
The recommendation from subcommittee was not favorable.
Very good. Discussion. Roll call. I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Hi, Denise Clements, 128 Country Club Place. Back up. Some kind of interesting, there's no discussion up here, but I think that leads to a conclusion. Maybe not. I hope not. I happen to be in the DPW, no PPP, whoever this one was. And again, I was surprised there was no real discussion. There was just a vote and a recommendation not favorable, as Counsel Lazo said. Very interesting. In, again, in the years that I'm counsel, things happen, you know? People have disagreements, people don't want people. The town manager has appointments that he gets to make. It's part of our charter. Generally, a town manager is very in tune with counsel and what's going on. When something is unfavorable or something seems to be that it may be unfavorable, generally the protocol is you don't bring an appointment forward. I've noticed recently, though, that that's not the case. It just happened recently with the Board of Health. An appointment was brought forward to which this council berated a volunteer. Whether you like a volunteer or not, you really shouldn't berate them in public that way, especially after numerous years of service, just because of the last year or two that you didn't like their service. Generally, though, we'll get back to the subject, that being unprofessional. The subject is that when you bring an appointment forward, if it's going to go down the tubes, you don't bring an appointment forward, I guess, if it's going to go down the tubes, especially unprofessional, that you do it to somebody, an employee. Generally, you would do that differently. I'm just bringing that forward. I don't know how this vote's going to go. I was disappointed, like I said, that if something is negative or not favorable, there should be discussion about it, right? I mean, shouldn't somebody in subcommittee, since you sent it back to subcommittee, took no action up here, sent it back to subcommittee, there should have been a reason besides a waste of time for an agenda item and people's attention to have to come to a meeting. I just bring that forward because the new council is about to be seated, and I'm seeing things, contrary to comments made earlier, I'm seeing things that is just not the way. Historically, I was taught when I was brought in, you know, all the great older council members telling you how it was done and very seasoned managers explaining things, MMA meetings, lots of managers, lots of input on lots of topics. There's ways to do things. There's professional courtesies. I hope going forward, whatever happens tonight, but going forward, that's taken into account by whoever's left sitting on this dais, because it doesn't give a good look to the town of Southbridge. Thank you.
Good evening, Nicole Duffy, Vice Chair.
Pull the microphone down.
I just want to offer my full support to Andy. He dedicates, does his life to his job, and anytime we have a question or anything like that, he's always available. He's, he's complete support. He's, you know, he's got loyalty to this town. And I'm not so sure how the vote's going to go, but, you know, I'm not sure what's really on the table, but I just want to make a point that, you know, if there's any question about, or, you know, any, any, anything as far as like, you know, he didn't do this right or anything like that, it's, it just, I believe, when you're an employee, and he's an employee of the town, we all are, typically what happens is that, you know, you speak with them respectfully in private, and you give a verbal warning if still you feel you're just. And after that, then there's a written warning. Then you go to that level. And it feels like there's a couple of levels that just got skipped. So I just really wanted to make a point of that and offer my full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Ms. Clement's point, having worked with Mr. Pelletier for two years, I was unaware that there was deficiencies in his job performance. You get occasional complaints, but nothing was really brought to my attention that would rise to the level of warranting any type of progressive discipline, which is what we do with most of our personnel here pursuant to our personnel bylaws. I've heard that there was things that happened before I got here, but my appointment is based on my working relationship with Mr. Pelletier in the last year. We may have had some differences when we first got here, but he's been responsive to many of the things that I've asked him to do. When I put his name in for reappointment, I was unaware that there was any feelings negative against him. I have heard from people who have called me, like Ms. Duffy, we've talked a couple times, and I've received quite a few positive comments from citizens and other people in town supporting Mr. Pelletier. So I just thought you should know that, that it wasn't really up until about the subcommittee that it was made known to me that there was people that had problems with Mr. Pelletier. And to, again, to Ms. Clement's point, in what one does, you try and work these out, and, you know, if there was a solution, there was, there was always an opportunity in my mind to try and resolve that. And that's all I'll say, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Anyone else? Roll call.
Counselor Catrona?
No.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
No.
Counselor Lazo?
No.
Counselor Marquetti?
No.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
And Counselor Adams?
No.
Motion fails. Item number 13, vote to confirm the town manager's reappointment of Caitlin Spencer as Animal Control Officer for a one-year term effective July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023. State ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second. Counsel Ozil.
The subcommittee recommended unanimously for the confirmation of Caitlin Spencer.
Very good discussion. Counsel Adams.
Mr. Chair, request to amend this motion. I believe the conversation was to appoint her instead of one year, to a three-year term through June 30, 2025. I believe that was the discussion. So I just wanted to amend that.
Any problems with that? Friendly amendment? You object?
I object to it, Mr. Chairman.
Do you make that a formal amendment?
Yeah, make a motion to amend this, Agenda Item Number 13, replacing 2023 with 2025.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second.
Sorry.
Sorry.
And three-year term, not one-year term, replace that as well.
We have a motion and a second. It's the discussion. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Question to either the chief or Counselor Adams. Why is it, I know we're required by law to do this annually. Can we get it by by doing it every three years? Is that allowed under the law?
If I could, through you, Mr. Chair, we are required by law to do the animal inspector through the state of Massachusetts. That's annually. The animal control officer, that actual position for the community can be whatever the council decides or determines is best. I highly recommend the three-year appointment we discussed with the subcommittee. Up to the council.
Very good. Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Chief, if we do the three years, do we still have to discuss any pay different every yearly or no? It's going to be the three-year? I don't know if you understand my question.
At this time, I would say this doesn't have anything to do with the wages. This is just a three-year reappointment like other positions in the community.
Thank you.
Counsel Steves.
I mean, I was just curious, why is it that this is a three, that you would do this as a three-year appointment and not as an indefinite one like some of the other town employees? Because essentially, she's a town employee.
I agree.
I'm just curious about that. I don't know why we, sometimes I don't know why we do that for some of these kinds of jobs.
Mr. Chair, I'm not sure. I guess it's what you never want to hear in management, is it's always been done that way. But unfortunately, in the community, we've always reappointed the animal control officer every year. And I don't know if there was some confusion, or maybe we had to do it every year, if they were confusing the animal inspector role that she plays with the animal control officer, that that may have happened.
Yeah, because I know that that comes up at a different timeframe. I think it was April or something like that, we did that one?
Yep.
We should try to sync them in so it makes more sense to do them together, but.
Anyone else? Very good. We have an amendment and a motion and a second. There being no further discussion. All those in favor of the amendment? Opposed? Amendment passes. We now have an amended motion on the table, on the floor. Any discussion? Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 14, vote to confirm the town manager's reappointment of Thomas Kumanelis as an auxiliary police officer for the town of Southbridge effective immediately through June 30, 2025. State ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Ozil.
The recommendation to the subcommittee was unanimous for this confirmation.
Chief?
Through you, Mr. Chair, I know there were some questions at the subcommittee, so I'll just kind of quickly just elaborate on some of them a little bit, maybe answer some questions. This is a reappointment. What's happening is Officer Kumanelis was an auxiliary with us for several years. He was a full-time police officer with us for 11 years. He was a police officer at the Cape. 13 years with us, 11 years at the Cape, so he's got quite a bit of experience. He helped us out during the COVID crisis with dispatch duties. He's currently a full-time police officer at Holy Cross, so he'll maintain all of his certifications that are required. Officer Kumanelis will be one of two of the remaining auxiliaries. We had to get rid of all the other auxiliaries. Basically disbanded the program other than for these two gentlemen, Agenda 14 and then coming up Agenda 15. These two will maintain all certifications that are required to be police officers.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Which actually raises the question that I wanted to ask, is I thought that the state had eliminated the auxiliary position. And I thought that's the whole point of doing the whole constable position, that we had, it's the next couple of items down. So can you explain why, I mean, I didn't think the job even existed.
No, absolutely, Mr. Chair. I certainly don't want any confusion. The state did not eliminate the auxiliary police program. I did. Because the town cannot meet the standards and the certifications that are required. It's cost prohibitive. It costs an additional, speculating about $100,000. I spoke about it in public meetings before. Many, many chiefs out of the 351 cities and towns have to disband programs altogether because Southbridge is not unique. Cities and towns cannot afford to maintain that type of auxiliary force with the new training that's required as a result of the police reform bill. Officer Kumanelis is the exception with one other. They're already in the law enforcement profession. They're going to maintain all certifications at no cost to this community. And that's why they're staying on as auxiliaries.
Okay.
Anyone else? Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you to the chief. So does that mean that if other opportunities like that happen, if there's an auxiliary who's certified in another community or another industry and they can come and work as an auxiliary, you would consider them for that?
We would, Counselor, and the only requirement would be we had 28 auxiliary officers. And out of the 28, only two of them wanted to maintain their requirements and their certifications. So if somebody is interested in doing that at their cost, they're absolutely welcome to.
Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 15, vote to confirm the reappointment of Paul Sujin as an auxiliary police officer for the town of Southbridge effective immediately through June 30, 2025. State ethics in good standing.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
Recommendation was unanimous to confirm this appointment.
Very good.
And again, Mr. Chair, just a unique situation. Mr. Sujin was a dispatcher for us for several years. He was an auxiliary officer with us for several years. He's currently my executive assistant. He's a part-time police officer in the town of Warren. He's going to maintain all certifications at no cost to the town. So I highly recommend that we keep him also as an auxiliary, so he'll be the second of two.
Very good. Discussion. Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 16, vote to confirm the town manager's appointment of the following people as special traffic constable for a two-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2024. State ethics in good standing. Aaron Berry of Southbridge, Mass., Madison O'Day of Southbridge, Mass., Wayne Boito of Southbridge, Mass., Duane Ledoux of Sturbridge, Mass., Jesus Rosa of Southbridge, Mass., Michael Sullivan of Holland, Mass.
Second.
Chief, I'm sorry, Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, all appointees on this Agenda Item Number 16 was a unanimous vote of the subcommittee to confirm.
Very good, Chief.
Mr. Chair, I seem to come here often just kind of trying to build up our traffic constable program. This essentially, to summarize quickly, is two dispatches who work for us full-time right now, four retired police officers, all four of them have more than 30 years of service. So I highly recommend all six to be special traffic constables.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I apologize if I'm repeating my question, but how many auxiliary police officers do we have now? I mean, I'm sorry, traffic constables do we have now?
With the addition of these six tonight, I believe 32, and 32 that aren't always available. So we're trying to keep between 25 and 30.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed?
Thank you.
Unanimous of all present. 17, we already did. Moving on to item 18. Vote to accept donation of a new shed to the Recreation Department for the West Street School baseball field pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A.
So moved.
Second.
This was Counselor Joe Van's committee, and it was, as far as I recall, approved unanimously.
It was, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Discussion. Very good. All those in favor? Anyone opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number 19, vote to accept donation of a new basketball rim to the Recreation Department for the Moore Streets Court pursuant to Mass. General Law, 44, Section 53A.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. This was also Counselor Joe Van, and I believe that too was accepted unanimously, recommended.
Yes, it was, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any discussion? I'd like to thank the generous citizens of Southbridge for their donations. Some people may think that a basketball rim isn't a lot, but it is a lot to the children that are playing at the park. Any donation is a good donation, and the fact that we have concerned and generous citizens in town is exemplified by these two donations alone. So I'm very pleased that we have these donations tonight, and I thank the citizens for their donations. Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Number 20, vote to approve entering into the agreement with the U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration, EDA, to design and construct the Quinnebog Valley Rail Trail Project for a total project estimate to be $4,123,625. It's funded under EDA's Fiscal Year 2021 American Rescue Plan Act Travel, Tourism, and Outdoor Recreation Notice of Funding Opportunity, NOFO, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did request that this come straight up, once we're being awarded, that it go straight up to the town council instead of going to the subcommittee. I'll also make a motion to amend this Agenda Item right after $4,123,625. It should state of which $2,623,625 is funded under EDA's Fiscal Year 21, America.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. We have an amendment on the floor. Any discussion? Counsel Adams.
I just want to thank the town manager, PEG, all the team within the town, the support. I just want to, it's interesting because in 2018, 2019, this was pretty much dead because of a lease issue between the state and us. It never died. It's just, we needed the right person to come in and help push that through. And I thought, kudos to Ms. Dean, to the town manager and everybody else that was involved in this, the state, the feds, you know, town governor, all those that advocated for us to get this rail trail all the way from Dudley into Sturbridge. And I just appreciate it. I'm looking forward to the design and the ultimate build of this. And a long time coming for this town. Thank you. That's all I have.
Counsel Ozil.
The rail trail has been in the making for quite a few years. And I know we have some residents that were in on the beginning stages of it. And they're always saying to me, when I see it, I'll believe it. When I see it, I'll believe it. And then all of a sudden, the money and the work from PEG Dean's office and planning development with just the town manager just pushed everything over the finish line. Pieces are falling in place. As one piece of the puzzle comes, we get to make a better decision on some of the other pieces of the puzzle that are going to build around it. So I think, you know, we're going to show Southbridge that it can happen, it will happen in due time. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This has been an issue, this was actually the issue I came to my first town meeting about when I first moved to town back in 2016. This was the issue we were talking about. This is how, and it's been going on long before that. You're right. This proposal died a couple of times. But PEG Dean and her office's work has been amazing. And this has been a boilerplate issue for so many Southbridge residents for so long. And we're finally doing it, and it's finally getting dug. And all the credit goes to the town manager and PEG Dean and her team for getting this done. Great job. This was a victory for Southbridge.
Excellent. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. This is a good grant, and of course, I wouldn't turn, I wouldn't vote against this either, even though I was originally against this whole rail trail plan. It's a lot of money to turn down, and of course, we should accept it. I just have a few questions. $2.6 million from the EDA, $400,000 from ARPA. The other $1.1 million would be coming from the state, I believe?
Mass. DOT, we have a commitment that if we got the EDA grant, that would be coming. And Ms. Dean can comment, but we're still in the running for additional rail trails grants that the Mass. DOT asked us to apply for, and we have our fingers crossed that we will receive even more funds to help offset these costs.
Okay, the only thing that I ask is that we get some more information from Mass. DEP about some of the properties that are along the trail, not just the trail, but also some of the properties that abut the trail, just to make sure there's no problems with contamination or anything like that. Hopefully, there's not. But I would like to have something from them, an updated, an updated plan or evaluation of the properties. That's all I'm asking. But other than that, I'm glad we got the grant. It's a good chunk of change. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Dow.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I want to say thank you for everybody's work on trail. Thank you, Peggy, Town Manager, Counsel Katrona. He pushed it. And I want to say thank you for the people already started 10 years ago to do the trail, finally happened. We have a good town manager, good Peggy. And good counsel. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. We have an amendment on the floor. We need to vote on that first. All those in favor of the amendment? Anyone opposed? The amendment passes unanimously. Okay, we have an amended motion on the floor now. Any further discussion?
Roll call.
Very good. Roll call, please.
Counselor Adams?
Yes.
Counselor Katrona?
Yes.
Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
Counselor Dow?
Yes.
Counselor Lazo?
Yes.
Counselor Marquetti?
Yes.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes.
Counselor Steves?
Yes.
Eight oh. Motion passes. Yay. That's good. That's good. Very good. Item number 21, vote to approve applying for the Parkland acquisitions and renovations for communities, otherwise known as Park Grant Program, to acquire 76 Central Street and construct a pocket park to be reimbursed up to $175,000 or 70% consistent with the urban renewal plan, and allow the town manager to sign any related documents.
So moved. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This right here was postponed from our last meeting to here until we had some clarification through executive session. So, but when it came to the PND, it was favorable. Thank you.
Very good. Any discussion? Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. The reason I oppose this one is because I think that $250,000 for that small piece of land is too much to spend on this. And I think that that money could go a long way towards fixing up some of the other parks in town that don't seem to get any attention. But if you want to purchase this property with the rail trail money, then I have no problem with it. But as far as this Parkland grant goes, I'd rather see it go for other parks in town. But thank you.
Ms. Dean.
Hi, good evening. As the CDBG Economic Development Coordinator, I've been working closely with the redevelopment authority, who had this on their plan as of 2011. The amount, the 250, is a highest in light of the fluctuations in the market. We would hope that that amount would be a lot lower. We're also going through the tip project for the design and construction, the demolition, design and construction, so that we can concurrently bid through economies of scale and probably get a better cost. And so I'm hoping the expenses are far less than that.
Very good. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just want to clarify, we brought this up at the last meeting, was that if it was 175, we kick up 75, and that would come from miscellaneous account through the CDBG funds, money that we had been brought back to the town itself. So that's how it would be funded through. Thank you.
Ms. Dean.
I do also want to just remind everyone, when we initially came to the town, it was going to be funded potentially all through.
going to be funded potentially all through miscellaneous income. We then found the Land Water Conservation Fund grant that was going to match at fifty-fifty. The Land Water Conservation Fund grant coordinator suggested we go through the park grant. She coordinates both grant programs and said we were better positioned to get a higher reimbursement of seventy-thirty, and that the timelines are more reliable than waiting for the Land Water Conservation Funds to be appropriated through the federal government.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Yeah, a quick question through you to PEG. So assuming we go through this, since we got the last grant, I'm assuming that this will probably pass. When will the work actually start?
What?
When will the work actually start to create that trail?
The work for the trail or for the pocket park?
For the trail.
So the...
And the pocket park is being part of it.
So I understand that you were provided the contract documents on Sunday. I know that you may not have had time to pour through all of them. It's been my bedtime reading. We have thirty-four months to complete the project from start to finish. We have to start construction within sixteen months. And things like environmental concerns will be addressed through permitting. All permitting has to be completed, obviously, before we can go ahead with construction. They have the right to rescind our grant if we do not start construction within sixteen months. So we want to all be as... We want to be as inclusive as possible in the public participation process, but we want to move along aggressively.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? I see seven, six to two. Motion passes. Item number twenty-two. Vote to accept the United States Department of Agriculture's grant award to fund eighty-six thousand six hundred dollars or thirty-five percent of a 2023 Ford E-450 ambulance pursuant to Mass. General Law Chapter Forty-Four, Section Fifty-Three A, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Lazo.
The subcommittee voted unanimously in favor of confirmation of this appropriation.
Very good. Any councils first? Okay, Counsel Steves.
Yeah, a quick question. If we can give a little bit of an explanation, because I unfortunately was not at that subcommittee meeting. I'm going to give a little explanation where the rest of the money will be coming from. Paul, manager, whomever. The chief. Whomever.
So thank you for the opportunity to spell this out. Obviously, the USDA grant was got by Ms. Dean last year. We've been waiting for this to come out. They are paying thirty-five percent towards us. The remaining funds on the last time this came to council, the appointment or the approval of it, it didn't have the final wording that the town manager would sign all appropriate documents to it. And the way it reads in the approval last time was out of stabilization is where the funds were going to come out.
Okay.
Okay. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. First of all, this was voted on last October, and I did have some questions at that time about the replacement ambulance. So how many ambulances do we have at this point?
We currently have three ambulances, fully equipped.
And this is replacing an ambulance?
This is replacing a 2010 ambulance with well over a hundred thousand miles on it.
At that time, I did ask, and you did send me some information about the ambulance. And some of the information goes back 2018, 19, and in 2019, it had almost ninety thousand. 2021, it had ninety-nine thousand. So that's five thousand miles per year. So is the ambulance you're replacing, is that like a backup ambulance? So it doesn't seem to get very many miles.
So due to its age and our newer... Two vehicles that are newer than those, this one does sit in the back row, but it does get used on probably a couple of times a week. And it is a backup that when we do go down to have repairs done on our one ambulance or sometimes two ambulances, we have to have a consistent flow of three ambulances to keep in service, to continue to do calls.
It didn't look to me like there was anything seriously wrong with the ambulance, though. It had a few cosmetics, as far as I could tell. Tear in the seat, taillight out, things like that. So you're just replacing it because it has too many miles? Is that what the issue is?
So the original conversation was, obviously, it has several hundred thousand engine hours. We talked about engine hours on these vehicles, because they do sit there in idle on scene, sometimes an hour, sometimes five minutes. So the engine hours, where I don't have those exact figures in front of me with the engine hours number, but I can tell you, it's probably well over two hundred thousand hours of engine hours. Even though it's not a personal vehicle like you drive, this vehicle has seen twelve, almost twelve full years of being used within department, driven by thirty different firefighters and paramedics. We have done our best to keep the brakes, obviously, the regular maintenance stuff up to speed. There are some cracks in the floor recently over the last several months. And actually, you know, the state would come in at some point and give us a discrepancy on those, or take the vehicle out of service until expensive repairs could be made. So our... The other thing is the rotation for replacement of ambulance is about four to five years. And this would be our... This would be four years on this one.
But this was scheduled to be replaced in 2025, I believe.
So if you recall, the PPP meeting last week, that question was described by Mr. Julian. That vehicle, right now, the reason why we put it on this agricultural grant was one, is because you would get thirty-five percent reimbursement for the cost of it. And number two, that the timeline on chassis right now are almost eighteen months out. So if we order the chassis now, in July, coming up, if this gets approved, we're still going to be eighteen months out, and it would be coming in probably in the beginning of 2024, or longer, from what I'm hearing from industry standards.
Okay. Well, the only thing I have left to say is that I did oppose this back in October when we voted on it. I would support it now if we could use ARPA funds, and I have mentioned this to you before, that ARPA funds, that is what ARPA funds are for. They're for public service, public safety, infrastructure, social service programs, frontline pay for people who had to deal with COVID. So if somehow we could change this from stabilization to ARPA money, I would be all in favor of this, to try and save the taxpayers some money. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I know for me, I wouldn't want to be on the person in that ten-year-old ambulance, having to wait, you know, or worry about, is this going to be the day in which the engine goes if I'm having an emergency? This is a common sense. This is the bread and butter of what government is supposed to do. And for me, it's frankly sad how long this town has continuously put off replacing emergency vehicles, when that's the most important thing that we should be focusing on. Consistently, we've not replaced the police at the rate they should be replaced at. Consistently, we've not given vehicles that need to be replaced in the fire department to not be replaced. This is one of those bread and butter vehicles in which I just know I wouldn't want to be in it if it broke down. This is common sense. Thank you, Chief, for your work on this. Thank you for getting us some reimbursement on it, instead of having to pay out the entire thing out of pocket, which would normally happen under most circumstances. So thank you, Chief. This is common sense. Vote yes. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel D.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I agree with Counsel Ryan. Twelve-years-old ambulance, hour seven hundred-plus mile. And the way you drive when you're down a road, you have an injured person in the ambulance, it's crazy sometime. My question to you, can we get the new one and keep the old one? We can have four?
We will talk about operational strategy at that point. But right now, there is no trade-in value for this vehicle. So ultimately, we could send it out for surplus, or sell it for surplus, or sell it outright at this point in time. But it would still be in our fleet when the new one comes.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, through you, this issue, we beat to death, I think, about four, five months ago. I don't always agree with that we don't do anything fast enough. This thing's been on the capital improvement for a while. Okay? Yeah, it was 2024, but it was put on a while ago as a projection of when the fire department would need it. And then we ran into a problem with getting it. So we said, leave it on the capital improvement plan. It'll catch up with the chassis and the shortfall of the supply, because you're not getting the ambulance, even if you're sitting here with the money. So we all knew that three months ago. I think we should just vote on this issue, for or against. We've already beat it to death. But I just... The turn of events are the same turn of events from, I don't know, six months ago, four months ago. So I'd like to move forward on that.
Okay. Ms. Clements, you wish to speak to this agenda item?
Actually, Mr. Chair, I want to speak to the last one, because the public has the right to come up, and I tried to come up, but you already went to the vote. So I'll wait till you finish this. Maybe I could just say a couple of things on the last item.
Yeah, if the council agrees, sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
Good. Thanks.
Okay, very good. We have an item on the floor. Okay, let's vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Seven one. Motion passes. Okay. Is the council willing to let Ms. Clements approach?
Yes.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you. I just wanted... First of all, I was just curious. Seventy-Six Central, you know, I was looking for the location. I'm not familiar with that particular park grant you guys were talking about. So what is exactly Seventy-Six Central Street, for those who don't know?
It's the old Morrell Building.
Pardon me?
It's the old Morrell Building.
Okay, on the corner there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right beside where the railroad is.
Uh huh. Okay. Yep, familiar with that. So they're not going to do the monuments there anymore, then, apparently?
Right. Yeah.
Okay. And I just, I heard you talk about this grant in which that one's costing us money, the rail trail, which is going to require a lot of oversight and such, too, costing us some money. It's all good stuff, generally. However, I just want to point out that I wish you would reconsider your vote earlier in regard to the inspector, in regard to the Board of Health Director. We have a lot of...
Hold on, Mr. Chairman.
I would just like to ask you to reconsider, because there are a lot of projects such as this.
That's not on the...
Actually, this is inspections. Somebody said we need to inspect.
That's not the agenda item.
So I'm just saying, you've left this town without a plan, just mentioning it. You left us without a plan. Thank you.
Item number twenty-three. Vote to approve the Inspection Department request to pursue the recycling dividends program grant for fiscal year twenty-three and to designate the town manager signatory of the RDP grant agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Very good. That was Counsel Jovan, I believe, and I believe that that was approved unanimously. Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Pelletier.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a grant that the town gets, applies for, and manages to get every year. It's a grant that we get for the things that we are currently doing in reducing trash and improving recycling. It's kind of a rewards grant. We expect slightly less from this year's grant, because they keep making the bar harder and harder to attain. And in order to attain it, we would put further hardships on the citizens of Southbridge, not our goal. But we are looking for the council's support tonight in approving as much of this grant as we can possibly get.
Very good. Discussion. Counsel Steves.
Yeah, just a quick question. Do we have any idea? Because I remember that years and years ago, we had concerns about recycling rates and having issues of being able to get people better educated on how to recycle. And I know, driving around town, we still see large, large issues with recycling. How are we dealing with that issue, and what kind of, what kind of recycling rates are we actually seeing?
We anticipate with the new waste bans coming in, that there's going to be a ton of education coming up. Anna and I were going to be planning that out over the next couple of months, as we haven't moved in that direction yet. I hesitate to speak on it, since I will not be part of it anymore.
Any further discussion? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present.
Thank you.
Item number twenty-four. Vote to approve Global Data Systems, GDS, quote, of one thousand six hundred fifty dollars for onboarding services and two hundred eighty-one dollars eighty-eight cents monthly service fee, for total of one thousand nine hundred thirty-one dollars eighty-eight cents for the first payment to provide IT services to the Cable Department, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended by the General Government Subcommittee unanimously. Jim from Cable and Denise Clements, who sits on the Cable Advisory Board, our only volunteer, I believe, at this point still. Thank you for your work on that. I appreciate it. The... They came before us, saying that this, the town was not included in this recent... The Cable Department wasn't included in the town's Global Data Systems contract that we have currently. So this would set up a new contract with them, with the Cable Department, to keep uniformity of services, if I remember, if I stated correctly, Mr. Manager.
Very good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Counsel Ryan is correct, and if Ms. Clements wishes to add further. But historically, the town has a managed service provider contract. Cable is not covered under it. And when we had Mr. Canoyer, he did provide some services to Cable. At the moment, they don't have them. So this would allow coverage to go over onto Cable. So they would have IT services.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Just a quick clarification. How long is this going to be? This is essentially based on a year-to-year contract, or do we have a timeframe for it? And does it flow with the same timeframe that the rest of the town hall has?
I don't have an answer to that immediately.
I didn't see it in the documents we have in front of us, so...
Off the top of my head. I'm not sure if they're in sync or not. Counsel Steves, I would have to ask. I think it's independent.
Yeah, because I don't even see a timeframe in here in the documents that I have on my laptop, so...
What'd you say? Counsel, I couldn't hear you.
I was asking if there was, the timeframes for the cable contract were the same timeframes that the rest of the town hall contract has, whether it's year-to-year. It doesn't, it's not really clearly stated in the documents that I have in front of me, so...
I do not have an answer for you at this moment.
Okay. Counsel Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Counsel Steves actually raises a pretty good question there, and probably we should know. We should have some idea about how long this is going to go on. What's the length of this? Is this a contract?
So I didn't bring the contract with me, if I may, but we discussed it. So it's a month-to-month fee. It's GDS, which is the exact same company the town uses, which is a year-to-year contract with the town. And therefore, without having it in front of me a hundred percent, but I'm like ninety-nine percent sure it's a year-to-year, but that's all I'm going to... I'm not going to say I'm a hundred percent. But it is the same exact company that we're using. It's just they cannot, at this point, we've talked about the possibility of, at some point, integrating, but that's not what they're offering us. It's a separate department, a separate... The monthly fee is just, you guys pay monthly fees based on the department's usage, how many computers, all that. It's the same situation. I questioned all that. The costs seem exorbitant in general, but it is, it's just the way the IT system works. And I don't know if Mr. McCall mentioned it, but, you know, we are looking at an IT director, and we've talked about the idea that it's possible for the whole town here at town hall, hopefully be saving money in the future on some of the other operational things that these guys are overseeing now, or will be overseeing for us as they do for the town hall, and hopefully, we'll all benefit from that. But in the meantime, it was a patch-up situation with Mr. Canoyer when he was here, and it's become really apparent that there just isn't any... There's a lack of safety, there's a lack of a lot of things, and certainly, Nor is not, as she says to me, I'm pretty good, but I'm just not the IT director. So that's why they're looking at doing this. It's a necessity more than anything. It came from the town manager's office as a recommendation for us to look at GDS as the resource for the cable. And it comes out of the cable ratepayers' money to continually operate that office. So that's all I got.
Thank you. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would be safe, this is a year-to-year contract right now. Based on the summary that it's talking about, it's very inexpensive. And I'm assuming it would be a lot more than this if it was a five-year contract. So, but I'm looking for it right now, see if we can find it.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present. Item number twenty-five. Vote to rat a five... Vote to ratify the agreement between Public Safety Consultants LLC and Town of Southbridge in the amount of $5,850 to conduct an assessment center to fill the rank of fire lieutenant and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved. Second.